I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Sandy.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Here.
Councilmember Parham?
Present.
Councilmember Catalero?
Here.
Mayor Palfini?
And I am here. I think. All right. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of agenda and any urgency items that need to be added. I think we had some verbiage in the consent agenda that needed to be addressed, Sandy.
Yes, but there was an update to Resolution 11 on the title that we had to modify. Those updates were, um, wanted to cover review and consent. To make sure that we adopted correctly.
Do we need to read the title, or we just accept it?
There is.
It'll be in the consent agenda, so we're good. Right, okay. We were also handed another piece of paper, and I don't know if the city council wants to address this. Does anybody on this council want to address the water bill adjustment, or should we make that a administrative action?
Nope.
There's no, um, there's a particular rule about when we can hear an urgency item.
That's not one of them?
And the rule is that it had to have come to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda, and it requires action by the council.
Okay, so it's just an information piece at this point?
Sound like unless you have other facts of water bill.
Okay, we're good.
And I don't believe staff has any other urgency.
Any other council members want to change the items or the order?
No.
All right. Item number four, non-agenda public comment.
Ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
Uh, can I get a motion to accept the agenda as modified? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. All right. Number four, non-agenda public comment. Now's the time that if there's anybody in the audience that wants to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. The council cannot take any action, but we can have a discussion as to put it on another agenda. Seeing nobody out there and no interruptions, we're on to item number five. Council member announcements, meetings, reports, and comments. Let's start off with Councilman Mazzoni.
Um, I just have something real fast, just for staff. I just was wondering if we could get some kind of an update on some of the businesses that were possibly coming in, like for next council meeting, the progress on that, on a couple of the businesses that supposedly are coming in. That's all. Yes. I think there's one remodel and then two that should be coming in, right, that were approved. Okay, I just would like an update on that if we could. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Parham?
Well, I'd just like to remind the public that we have the Rowan and Weed Car Show. The Weed Chamber is going to be hosting in conjunction with College of the Siskus having an artist and craft fair on August 26th. We will also be entertaining a bicycle rodeo put on by the Friends of K-9 Dracks. There will be, uh, you know, bicycle helmets being given away by donation for children that participate, um, and hopefully some bicycles as well. So I'd like to encourage people to bring their families out and come and enjoy the bicycle rodeo and the fair and the car show. It'll be a good time.
And is there a bocce ball tournament?
Yes. Wait, I got that on mine.
Okay. All right. On to Councilman Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this month.
Okay. Councilman Catalero?
I do. Um, I was at a law, uh, long-term recovery, LTC, Local Transportation Committee meeting, and we have a new executive director for the LTC, which is great, and apparently I made Craig's Day by telling him that. Because she is going to get, after getting grants, for road construction. Yeah, you're kind of girl. And on top of Daryl's, there is a bocce tournament on the car show day. There is also horseshoes that same day.
Music?
And I don't know about music, but there's going to be fire department hamburgers, and there's going to be a 100th birthday party for the fire truck, and it will be down there with a sign, and there will be fire truck t-shirts and...
Fire truck cake?
Maybe fire truck cake and fire truck pictures by Steve Richardson.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Nice job. My report is kind of short. I do want to make a report that two things have come to my attention via kind of complaining from some of the citizens. One is the vandalism issue that I know we're aware of on our main street. Second is there's vandalism issue in the Heritage Plaza. There was a couple items put in there by the Resource Center that were immediately destroyed, which is not cool, but it is. I would like to ask the council to maybe consider locking it up again. I just love locking a nice recreational plaza because it's first time, I think, it was dog poo everywhere. This one's vandalism everywhere. I've also notified that there's people chaining the gate and then letting their pit bulls run around, having a grand old time. I guess it's our new dog park. I'm not sure. So, anyway, that's one of the things that we have come across, so I would hope the public would at least report it if they see it. It's hard enough to keep our community in one piece, much less having, I'll use the term graciously, a crackhead making a mess of it. That's all I'll report on today. Let's move on to item number six, consent agenda. Any items want to be removed from the consent agenda?
No. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would like to remove the Finance Department from the consent agenda, and I have an item I just wanted to point out, not a long discussion, but just to point out. So I'll take that off the consent.
Which item? E or F? There's the month-end report, or there's the checks that have already been?
Revenue report.
Okay. So that would be item F.
Yeah, item F, okay.
All right, I'll change.
And just for the record, that does reflect, item C reflects the amended title to Resolution 11, 2023.
Yes. I just wanted to remove the...
So I can say...
You would like to move to...
Remove, yeah.
Well, after we get public comment, you can remove, move to approve the consent agenda as amended without item F.
Without item F, yes, that's what I said.
Can I get a second?
I'll take that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, public comment on item F. On item consent agenda. Nothing, okay. I have to ask for public comment. He hates when I just kind of run right over it, I know. Do we talk about item F now, or do we...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to bring forward to the council's attention on page... I believe it's page 29 of the consent agenda. I'd have to look. It's regarding finances and the revenue from TOT. Item from revenue from TOT states that we pulled in... Can't remember how much. I'm not looking at it.
Is it the 6, 700?
Let me see.
Oh, that's, no, I'm sorry. That's the STID.
Here's securing revenue, revenue, transit occupancy tax. We pulled in $26,848. And what I want you guys also to look at, the budget, we budgeted $435,000. So far, we're shy about $408,000. The reason I'm bringing it up is last time we did a TOT discussion, there was discussion on what money is available to the agencies from the TOT portion that belongs to, like the museum or the chamber. The notice is we pass out roughly $80,000 to $100,000. My objection originally was that the city was taking, already had the lion's share of TOT, so out of the item of $408,000, if we stay true to budget, or a projected budget, the city is already getting, for the general fund, $107,000, $108,000. I mean, um, we are getting $108,000, they are getting $300,000 already to spend in the general fund. Intent of the TOT funding is to go to those agencies and not the city, and I did bring that up, and I just wanted to reaffirm that and show that the council on where those monies are spent. And my comment was with some of where we allocated it to, which was public safety should be in the more, more in line with the general budget item and not the passing out of TOT funding for public agencies. So with that, that's all I had to say, and I just wanted to make sure that council member knows where that line item is. So, my hope is that it has an impact on how we handle that budget item. So... Not asking for any action, that was just a discussion on my part. Anybody in the public have a comment? See, I asked for public comment. Sadly, I knew you'd love me for it. Anybody from council have a question? Okay. All right. All right, thank you very much. That's on to item...
Motion to approve and file.
Pardon me?
We do need a motion to approve and file the month-end report for July 2023.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the month-end financial report.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to item number eight, council business. We have one item up. I just, I wanted to bring all that up so we didn't get out of here like six, six o'clock, and wanted to make sure we tortured everybody a little bit. What time have I got? We're only in this for 20, 10 minutes. I'm going to pass a Chuck Sutton record unless I can kind of, what do they call that?
Talk too much?
You know, just keep talking and talking.
We've not been here since four.
6:30 a.m.
Hey, I got up at seven this morning, but I just watered my lawn.
I was up at five.
So, okay, on to item A, Public Works. By motion, the council will consider First Amendment to the Agreement for the Collection of Solid Waste within the City of Weed. I believe we have somebody from Solid Waste here to speak on their behalf, I guess. Good afternoon.
My name's Martin Andreas. I'm an attorney. I've had an office up in Wyrika for 25 years, and I'm here today representing Siskiyou Disposal and Chelsea Meadows, the manager is here also to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Andreas, maybe it would make sense to have the city manager just introduce the items to the council, and then we'd love to hear your comments.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
As we've discussed over the past couple of months, there's been a request for some amendments to the original agreement that was started December 1st of 2022, and I've kept the council abreast of what's going on in regards to this. There's actually two items that'll be discussed, and Mr. Andreas can give you any of the information pertinent to what their request for the amendments are. One is in reference to the performance bond, and the other one is in reference to the recycling program. So there's, I think tonight we'll probably have a definite closure on the performance bond requirements, but I think there's going to be some discussion regarding recycling that needs to go forward. So, do you have anything else, David?
Yeah, so if council recalls the current contract with Siskiyou County Disposal requires a performance bond to basically ensure compliance with the contract, and it's my understanding that they have been, they have been unable to secure a performance bond. So I've had extensive discussions with Mr. Andreas over the last month, and we have prepared some proposed language that I believe is acceptable to Siskiyou County Disposal, and it's acceptable from my perspective for the city. And that section is in both of the draft amendments that were included in the packet under Section 2. Essentially, it allows the hauler to either get a performance bond or to get a letter of credit, which is essentially the same thing, or provide a cash undertaking, which is basically depositing the cash, the $100,000, in an account that would then be accessible to the city in the event of a default under the agreement. So that's Section 2 about performance bond, I'm okay with, I believe the hauler is okay with. And when we went through the contract, we realized we had to make some tweaks also to the events of default. So that is listed as Section 3 of the amendment on both of the agreements. Given the importance of having a bond or some type of security for the city when they have a hauling contract like this, it would be my recommendation, regardless of what you do this evening with respect to the recycling issue, that you consider approving these two sections, regardless of what happens with, with the recycling and how the council wants to move forward on the recycling issue. So I just wanted to make sure that it's clear, we can essentially sever that issue of the performance bond from the recycling. That's the will of the council. And then with respect to the recycling, the proposal from the hauler was with respect to the frequency of pickup, to move it to a month a month. And then staff had some proposed additional language related to clients with reporting requirements. So there's just two dueling provisions, and so I think that concludes my report this time. I'm happy to answer questions as you move forward. I think it'll be important to hear from Mr. Andreas.
You honest to listen to him and then ask you questions, or...
Sure.
Okay. You're up.
Well, I believe that Mr. Ruderman and Rundell pretty much stole my thunder, but I'll fill in the blanks. What happened was my clients never were in any way trying to avoid their obligation under the agreement with the city to get the $100,000 bond. Chelsea Meadows went to nine different bond companies, sureties, and was rejected every time because of the language in the agreement. In other words, the agreement between the city and the Sisku disposal company, the language was something that the bond company is objected to. So we tried talking to them to see if they would accept different language, and again, we don't have any absolute guesses on that, but we do know that once the language in the contracts change, we'll be able to, at some point down the road, to get the bond. So because we were unable to get the bond due to the language in the contract, we then asked the city to amend that language, which would be something that a bond company would be more comfortable with. But because there's no bond existing at this time, in good faith, what my clients are willing to do and have provided the evidence that they've planned to carry through with this tomorrow is they're going to put up $100,000 cash as a surety in lieu of the bond, which protects the city, actually makes it easier for the city to access in the event of a breach. So the language that I've proposed, and Mr. Ruderman's worked with me on this, is going to be the new language in paragraph 6, and also the new language in paragraph 19. And I don't, I do believe that Mr. Ruderman and I are in agreement with that language. While we were negotiating this, the city approached me and said, as long as we're amending this contract, we need some added language in the recycling part of it. So I don't want the council to confuse that this is a quid pro quo, that we have to have recycling language added at the same time that the performance bond language is added. It's just two different, entirely different issues. But as far as tonight's concerned, we're asking that the city approve the amendment regarding the performance bond and the events of default, paragraph 6 and paragraphs 19, and that we discuss the language regarding the recycling. My client has information, which I don't think that the city does, regarding how the recycling works and why they're unable at this point to control the volume of recycling that's going to the Sisku Opportunity Center, who's currently the recipient of the recycling and who ends up separating and selling the recycled goods. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or you can direct them to Ms. Meadows.
Well, I will ask my posse here, if you guys have questions. I'll let you guys go first. Daryl, any comments, questions?
Well, I think that we want to break this into two different things, so I think we should look at the action item on the table for the language in paragraphs 6 and 19, and get that out of the way, and then we can discuss the recycling portion after that.
You guys concur?
Yes, I concur.
If, if we discuss both of these items separately, and we can write them, we can write them back into the document as one, is that correct? Now, we can talk about them separately, but it's still regarding that one contract?
Correct. So, I mean, for example, you could make... That would just require us to revise the amendment. If then you, when discussing the recycling, you come up with something that you want to actually approve, then we can work that into the amendment as well, if you end up pushing that or, you know, requiring the parties to speak more than we would.
Okay. So for me, I would have, one question is in the $100,000 that you're willing to put up. What makes it available to the City of Weed?
And I prepared a draft agreement, which I sent to Mr. Ruderman earlier today. Basically, the funds would be deposited with Mechanics Bank. It would be called a blocked account. The city would be the payee, and they would make a demand upon those funds through council if at some point it was necessary to get those funds. The bank then would have the agreement that says, that provides the language that if the city makes the request for the funds, the bank then releases them to the city. At some point, should the clients locate a bond, then we could get rid of that particular surety and go forward with the bond. But until we can do that, until we have this language approved and it can go through the application message, methods, we're still going to need that $100,000 bond that would be available to the city.
So the bond just stays there until we get a performance bond or a letter of credit?
Yes. In fact, the language that I proposed said that would be there the length of the entire contract until there's either...
Because we just have a couple sentences, is all we have in front of us.
Yeah, I did receive the proposed language that Mr. Andreas refers to. It does look acceptable, it looks acceptable to me. You know, ensuring that Mechanics Bank, that we are listed on the account statements as well.
And withdrawals can't be made out of it?
Right.
Can't be pledged anywhere?
Right. We would, they would, they kind of, it's almost like an escrow account. They would only be able to release the money to us if we can show them that the contract allows it.
Is it escrow account safer? Is an escrow account safer for us?
In some ways it is, because it's...
Okay.
And this is what you were talking about, another city does the same thing.
Uh, the other city that I was talking about does, has a letter of, they have a letter of credit with the bank, so it's similar.
Yeah, same type of thing. Okay.
So is this mechanism of taking this $100,000 and setting it aside versus a letter of credit, is this actually like a loan against the business, and is it going to have any kind of negative impact on your, you know, future, you know, performance or capital expenditure needs to maintain your fleet, your employees, things like that? I mean, is this, you know, is this going to be like a detriment for your operational, you know, having to pull $100,000 out and set it aside as opposed to a letter of credit?
Well, I think Ms. Meadows can answer that better than I can.
No, it'll be, we're fine. I wouldn't commit to that if we didn't have the funds. And I'm working on a letter of credit as we speak, so...
Okay.
That's in the process already. So, yep.
So this is, in your eyes, a kind of a short-term fix?
Yes.
Okay. I would agree it's a better short-term fix than it is a long-term fix. Okay.
Good. So you're good with these two?
Yeah, I would approve the amendments to, um, paragraph 6 and 19. I would approve those.
I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, move that we, uh, accept revising the performance plan in paragraph 6 and 19?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't ask for public comment on any of this, I apologize. Before we, any public comment? There was one person in the back, two people in the back. No public comment, then the vote's on.
This is on the performance bond issue.
Right, this is the performance bond issue. So that's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. None opposed?
Good, good, good.
Let's take the second section of the collection agreement. Do you want to discuss that, Tim, just briefly?
Well, just a little bit of history. When we sent out the RFP for collections back in July of 2022, there were some requirements that we put within the RFP in regards to diversion requirements, essentially stating what we're asking for in here, which would be to meet all, to be in compliance with all state obligations in regards to recycling and diversion. And then when we got the quote back from Sisku County Disposal, within their quote, they said that they would continue the collection of recyclables within the city limits, and the process of collecting recyclables will remain the same. And it goes into another sentence there, saying that they can be placed in the blue bags, and they would pick them up on the same day that the waste removal occurred, which is weekly. And since then, they are now doing it on a monthly basis and are asking the council with their current request for a monthly pickup. And according to Mr. Ruderman here, they had some questions in regards to our language that essentially stated that they would stay in compliance with all diversion for any future local, state, and federal regulations in regards to refusing recycling and the diversion requirements. So I think they'd like to discuss that with the council as well.
Okay, and again, I just want to make it clear that it was the city that approached us to make the amendments, because it wasn't in the original contract regarding the amount of time...
Excuse me, the recycling was in the contract. You keep saying that there wasn't in...
This, this language was. This, this language wasn't.
Okay, okay. You, are you keep, you said before that there was nothing in there regarding recycling?
No, no, it was paragraph six.
Okay.
So anyway, this language wasn't in it. And so, one of the things that was brought to my clients was how often do you want to pick this up? And their suggestion was once a month. And there's a reason for that, that my client can explain. The other issue is, if you look at, I don't know if you have the same amendment as I do, it's actually highlighted in blue, and, uh, under Roman numeral one, paragraph six, it says the responsibility of the contractor to ensure that the city is in compliance. My client can assure that they'll be in compliance. I don't know how they can assure that the city's going to be in compliance.
Well, I, I would like to say, if I could interrupt just one second, is that the, the requirements to the city can change. The requirement that those, when those items change, that they would stay compliant, I believe was in the original contract, if I read it right. Uh, in, in other words, we weren't, we're not asking for anything that wasn't in the original contract. The modification that we, you guys want is to do it once a month versus once a week. That's kind of how I'm interpreting this. Am I missing something here?
Well, why don't you explain how that works with the Opportunity Center? Because this is where it gets tricky.
Well, okay, so, there was not anything in the original contract that said how often it needed to be picked up. We, David and myself had a meeting with Craig, Sandy, and Tim, and asked if we could pick it up on a once-a-month basis, and it was agreed upon that we could.
No.
Um, and it was a lengthy discussion. So I set up a schedule, I sent that out to everyone, on, with a list of everything that we can take in the blue bags, everything that we cannot take in the blue bags. The Opportunity Center only allows us to drop materials off once a month, they don't want it any more than once a month. So that's another issue, is storage, because we are not allowed to have anything at the city yard any longer. So, um, there's a storage issue of where we should put this material while it's sitting, waiting to be dropped off.
Where was it, where was it stored before?
The yard with the other company.
I can answer that, Tim.
Okay.
In the past, CND Ways picked it up weekly, and that was a minimum. Whatever it was, they had a pickup designated for it.
Was that that gold pickup?
Yeah.
With the wood sides on it?
Okay. So they couldn't have been collecting too much refu, I mean-
I'm assuming going to monthly, there's a lot less.
Well, we fill up an eighteen-yard box every month of recycling.
I don't know what is, what the number used to be.
Well, it seems like a pickup truck isn't eighteen yards. Eighteen yards, that's, that's, that's a lot of, uh, recycles. So, I, I'm saying, did the original contract have, it would, did, what did the original contract state? Is that it was going to stay the same?
Yeah.
Under the, uh, section four, it states that, uh, not less than once a week, talking about the collection and recycling under that headline there. And within the proposal that they brought us, it says recyclables will be placed in the blue bags provided by the company and placed curbside for the pickup on the same day waste removal occurs. I don't know if there's some sort of miscommunication, but I, I don't recall, and I, I'm assuming my two coworkers here too, uh, as to any agreement to do it monthly, because we don't have the authority to do that. So, um, if there was a miscommunication, that, that's fine, but their proposal said that they would pick it up the same day that they picked up the waste, uh, removal, and within the RFP itself, it basically states the same. If, if we needed to tighten up the language in the agreement, that's fine, but, and that's where we are today.
So that's why we need an amendment, is to make everybody happy?
Uh, apparently.
Okay.
I mean, I think the city's position was that it was to be picked up weekly. The hauler is requesting that that be changed to one month.
Changed to monthly.
And, you know, if there is some negotiation as to the frequency, you could do that now with the hauler.
And when I-
Besides where you store it, are there any other issues?
Uh, there is the issue of, um, the reporting as to the amount. So, my clients only transport, they don't know how much that they're transporting, that's done by the Opportunity Center. They dump the materials at the Opportunity Center, the Opportunity Center then separates it and does what they do with the, uh, materials. So, again, my client doesn't get reimbursed for doing this, they're doing this as part of the overall contract, but, um, they have no way of knowing the actual amounts for reporting purposes.
I would, they, they don't give you any paperwork from the Opportunity Center?
No, because we drop it off, and then it takes them time to sort through it. And there's a contract with the city and the Opportunity Center, and I'm assuming there's reporting that goes on between the city and the Opportunity Center after it's sorted and weighed, because they have to report that, because they're being paid by the state.
So does the city put out money for doing this, to the Opportunity Center?
Mm-hmm. We, yes, and we, we-
So it's costing us-
Sure.
The city and the citizens that, that price.
It costs us more than we're reimbursed, from what-
Yeah, there's, there's, there's not a lot of money in recyclables.
No, no, but I'm just-
And-
There isn't any money in recycling.
Yeah, essentially, there is none. Um, and, uh, Mr. Sharp can discuss a little bit more in detail as to the way it was set up prior to, as far as the reporting and diversion. I believe we did it through the county.
Opportunity does report to the state, it does report to the county, and the county reports to the state, and the county landfill, and the whole hall has to be reported to the state. The city did not have to do a lot with that. We have to enforce all the assembly bills we have to do. And our going out to bid, that's what we're requesting the hauler to do, is to keep us in compliance, whether it means the hauler dealing with this, with the county, the hauler dealing with the state, or the hauler dealing with the city. We also requested that there would be some wire put out. A lot of steps recycling, that would be done. For posters on our-
Yeah, the RFP states that whoever the hauler would be, would be in compliance with that and requirements for the public education strategies and, and the things that we, we were, were required to do. And, and when you, uh, and whenever we got your proposal, it stated that you would, everything would remain the same, which, within the RFP, said the public out, public education and outreach and the diversion, uh, programs. So that's what we were assuming was going to be done, and that's why we're here tonight. If, if, and, and I think if there's some issues as far as needing assistance with the, uh, reporting and, and those type of things, you're more than welcome to talk to staff. I mean, Craig is the one that was dealing with CND before, and he can also, you know, assist you in, in, in routing you to the right person with the county, um, in, in regards to that. But we were under the assumption that, because it was in the RFP, and because you said you were going to, everything was going to remain the same with recycling, that that's what was going to be done, so.
I also might think that, uh, this might be a new experience, uh, for the disposal company. Uh, I don't know if you've operated in many incorporated cities. It sounds like to me most of your contracts have been in the unincorporated area. Um, this is your first foray, welcome into incorporated cities. We have a little bit more detail to deal with, um, because just as you witnessed, just from our water plan, our housing plan, we have a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. So, uh, when we do something like this, if you had a question, I would say that the question should be asked prior to, and not assume that it's just kind of like, I mean, and that's in the future, it doesn't help, help me now, or help you now either, but, um...
Yeah, so Craig, when they drop that off at the Opportunity Center, um, that comes in in the blue bags, so the Opportunity Center knows it's from weed? Do they know it's from, because they're not reporting back to the city, they're reporting back to the county?
Be quiet, she's telling you to be quiet.
Right.
Sorry, go ahead.
But they're, but the Opportunity Center knows, because it comes in the blue bags, that it needs to get recorded?
Credit it to weed? Well, they, they credit the county as a whole, but the cities also get credited, so I'm assuming that it's put in a separate spot? I don't know. I've never seen what they do down there, where they take them at, but I just heard we do eighteen yards a week or a month, so, I don't, I don't know. I don't know where, how it gets put down there.
Well, did you-
It all gets dumped in the same spot. And sometimes when we go down there, there's not even anybody there. We don't sign anything, we don't get any paperwork, we don't get anything.
Are there other blue bags when you drop that off?
The only other city that takes recycling into the Opportunity Center is the city of Dunsmere.
Oh. And they only do it once a month. They only collect once a month.
City of Mount Shasta picks up recycling once a month.
Once a month.
Are the Dunsmere bags blue?
Just there.
Like, just like ours?
Yep.
So they wouldn't know if they were ours or theirs, with the exception that there's probably twice as many in, from weed?
So is most of this extra work, sorry, so, PI, public information? Like flyers and-
Yeah, that, that was part of the, the bid requirements as well, as the public education outreach and, and, and those things. And I, I understand your frustration with, with them, but, I mean, that has to be coordinated between you guys and them. I mean, there has to be some communication going on. I don't know, can you guys take it across the scales and then somehow?
But it has to be reported to the states separately.
They have to take the garbage and everything out of it first.
Yeah.
Before-
And it has to, they have to tell, okay, it was this much tonnage in cans, this much tonnage in plastic, this much tonnage in glass, tin, whatever they collect. And some of it they get reimbursed for, some of it they don't get any reimbursement for. So it all has to be separated and weighed before they can report it.
And they're reporting it to the county?
I believe they're reporting it to the county.
Probably both.
Yeah.
Probably both, and I would say they're probably just doing a, well, here's a twenty for weed, and here's a twenty for Dunsmere, and here's thirty from, for Wairika, because they're busier, but I think Wairika takes theirs north, but, um...
Well, Wairika Transfer has their own recycling center, so they do all of their own stuff.
Okay.
And then Karen reports all of her own stuff to the, the state, county, whatever. They sort it all there.
And so we take it to Siskiyou Lan, Siskiyou Opportunity Center by contract, or, and because there's no one else to take it to?
There's, Wairika would, would take it, I imagine, if I asked her, they really not interested in it, because there is no money in it, and this is a chance for employees at the Opportunity Center?
Well, I'm just saying, can the, can they take it to another recycler?
It's farther away from-
Yeah, I mean, if it was sorted.
Yeah, but they don't have to store it. I mean, storage seems to be-
Will they sort it down at, up in Wairika?
No.
Has to be sorted.
So it sounds like it's going to the Opportunity Center, because they're using that as a mechanism to sort it for opportunity, for their employees.
Yeah, and they get paid to do that.
Yeah, their employees are reimbursed.
So the issue here is that we, do we need to report, or, so the, the only issue we have as far as the city weed goes is the frequency of pickup and the educational flyers.
It, it's the frequency, the education, and the, the diversion program in general for reporting purposes.
If we don't report, we have to come up with the money that the state gives us. State gives us five thousand dollars a year.
For blue bags, yes.
And I think, last time I saw it, it cost us sixty-five hundred, or something like that.
Yeah.
For blue bags? For the blue bags?
For the blue bag program.
Okay.
So in other words, there's not, there's nothing in it for us either.
No, no.
There's nothing in it for them either.
So it's costing them money, it's costing us money, the only one who's winning is Opportunity Center employees.
And-
And they're not winning, that, that's just kind of a-
Article I sent you, Tim?
Say what?
Remember that article I sent to you about the Opportunity Center employees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just getting people to work.
It, it is, and, and it's the way it's been done for years with our, with, uh, CND, and I think it was pretty seamless, because I never heard any other issues from Paul or his crew. I mean, I wasn't here, uh, prior, you know, to 2020, so, I mean, Craig has a history on this more than I do, since it was under his department, so.
Yeah, no, Paul, Paul never had an issue with it. Paul and, and, uh, Emerys were a part of the committee, the county, we were having meetings for this, uh, recycling, and meetings with the state, they come up every once in a while. And the county has a recycling, Arthur Boyd used to be it, I don't even know who it is anymore, but there is a department up there, their landfill department that does that.
Well, personally, if I was in business and doing your business, I would log how much it call, costs me, how much you're getting, and write the rest off as a contribution to the Siskiyou Opportunity Center, but that would just be me. Because, well, because it's not a profit. It's not a profit for the city, it's not a profit for anybody.
But it was included in the garbage bid, so.
Right.
Hopefully you worked that in.
Gas wasn't, oil and diesel wasn't up, you know, the prices, so that obviously still bumps it up, you have to consider that too, I would think. So they weren't, you know, for them to go, and they get a great job at it. They didn't have a problem going down. What did you do it? But again, their prices, I mean, is this the way it was?
No, but, well, all of that should have been included, you know, should have been evaluated on, on, when they were doing the bid. I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that part of the issue becomes, this is their first jump into a incorporated city, so there are different requirements versus working in the county, at the county, in the county.
Totally on that.
So.
I'm looking a way to try to-
I, I am too, I just can't see anything that was going to make anybody happy. I would, I would also tell you that this could have been discussed without, no offense to the lawyers in the room, but it could have been decided without lawyers, with just an amendment brought to the city. I do object to using our legal beagle time here, because, uh, it cost us three, four hundred dollars an hour, and that's, to me, that's, that's time, money that this, this city didn't have to spend with this either. So I didn't bring it up in the time before when we were discussing this money issue, but, uh, I would say it is an item, that, that, for me, we could, we could have done this without, uh, the use of lawyers, um, by just following the normal procedures that were suggested by our city manager. Um, I just want to throw that out there.
So on the issue of the recycling bags, what are the, what is the feedback, if any, from our citizens? What are the people of weed say? Are they looking for weekly pickup? Or are they looking for bi-weekly, monthly, like, what is, because they're, they're our customers. They're the people that we're elected to serve. So what is, do we have feedback from our citizens about the recycling frequency?
I have some in my neighborhood, and I'll be honest, what they, up in the south weed area, they say, well, cut way down, so eventually, they're thinking it's going to be cut out all the way, so they just, like somebody told me, they just throw it in with the garbage and it goes out. So that was their concern, nothing's going to get picked up, period. And I said, it's once a month, so they're in the same boat. What do we do? We keep it for a month? You know, I do, I have a area I can keep- You know, I do. I have a area, I can keep all my bottles and so on and so forth. So that was kind of the concern I got in the neighborhood that I was in. Because they're always asking, you have an extra blue bag, you have an extra, they drop them off to you. I didn't get it. So that's just kind of the things that I'm getting. And I think I may have told you that.
Right. And, you know, another thing that, and I wouldn't have never changed the schedule without having the conversation beforehand with Tim and Craig and Sandy. We had a meeting, we discussed it, and it was okayed for us to do that. Another issue that is something to think about is that there is a handful of people that fill up multiple bags. Ninety percent of the people fill up one bag a month. So you're, you know, it costs the city money to buy all of those bags. So you're picking up a quarter of a bag every week and giving these people another bag. So how much money are you wasting on all of these bags?
So I've never participated in my decades of living here and having garbage service and blue bags, so how big are these bags?
They're pretty.
Garbage can size.
Yeah.
There's like thirty-three gallons.
I know, so like my chief engineer lives in Oregon, he has a recycling pickup, I don't know the frequency, but they actually have a garbage can size can that they have that's just a blue can.
My mom has them ready.
They're not quite that big. I'd say thirty-two gallon, like an Ace can.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they're bags, soft bags?
Yeah.
So why aren't we just running cans for lower cost, longer lifetime than the bags? If the bags cost so much money?
Take a long, lot of bags.
Lot of money.
Lot of bags.
Yeah, so I talked with Quentin about that at the.
Economic.
Yes. And the economic development. And so that was one of the first things that we discussed when I met with him, when we got the contract. And so the city would have to apply for grants for those containers and for a truck because there has to be a truck that only recycling goes into it, cannot be contaminated. So it would be a purchase of a truck and containers. And each one of those containers is probably a hundred and twenty dollars apiece.
Some of them have three different containers. You have to put them in, and there's different trucks coming to pick them up. I've seen that down south, so.
Down in Redding, but those people pay.
A hundred and fifty dollars a month.
It's expensive, and they're pretty rigid on if you put the wrong thing in there, they won't pick.
Well, and even, a lot of the stuff that we pick up right now is not supposed, I mean, it's supposed to be clean, dry, without lids or labels. And I would say ninety percent of the stuff that we pick up is not so.
We've already gotten a lot of feedback from the Opportunity Center about trash in the blue bags, and they've already told us, hey, if this stuff is dog, you're not going to be allowed to bring it in here. And we've sent letters.
I've sent letters, I put, with bills, everybody's bills.
Public information with the billing and.
And it's all listed on our website also.
There's information all over about recycling.
Craig, how many complaints did we get when they started going to once a month?
I, I received, I don't know, let's say ten or twelve people that said, I'm not going to keep my recyclables in my house for a month. That they didn't want to hold them for that amount of time. And I know the girls up front have gotten some complaints about it. I mean, it's not a hundred people, but people are used to once a week. They want there once a week.
Is there a place that we could make available in the yard? Or was, what was the reason why we didn't, don't use the yard?
Part of this whole thing is the city's trying to get out of the garbage service and recycling business. And that's why we went to an outside contractor, so it's not run under the city anymore. So when we had CND, they contracted for us. They were our employees, so their equipment was parked there, their recyclables were there, and they were a part of the city. This is a whole separate deal now. That was a, the idea behind this was to get out of that business.
But the recycling is still the city's. Recycling hasn't changed, only the reuse.
We just pay for it.
We pay as part of your contract, that's.
Yeah.
The city of weed has a contract. Or the city's recycling to go.
And, and what we did is we passed it on to you?
No.
Is that right?
No.
No? Okay.
And getting back, you just made a statement saying it's, the recycling is our responsibility, but when you took the contract, it basically said you would assume the collection of the recyclables.
When we took the contract, it said we were continuing to make what Paul was doing. Then we had the verbal agreement in the meeting with Craig and Sandy and Tim. And we asked you if we could do it once a month, and you guys said, okay, that's fine.
I, I.
Craig remembers it.
I don't.
I, I, here's what I may think may have happened. You may have said, can we haul it to the opportunity zone once a month?
No, it was very specific. I asked if we could pick it up.
Well, I'm telling you, the three of us are not liars, and we're not lying right now, so. I'm just telling you right now, that is the first, I, I mean.
And they can't amend the contract?
We don't have the authority to tell a contractor, just verbally in a meeting.
This is why we have attorneys here.
Yeah.
Because we can't sit down.
Well, this, I actually have full trust in the staff here, so whatever miscommunication took place, takes place. I'm not going to say we can't always miscommunicate, but believe me, I sell insurance. There's always miscommunication.
But we're not getting anywhere.
We're not getting anywhere.
Till we come up with something that's fair on both ends of it, period.
I don't know.
We're, we're partnered with these, with them. I know he knows how I feel, I mean, you know, but I also think that the blue, you know, should do it at least a couple times a month, that's what I'm saying. That's just my thoughts on it.
I mean, with the first week and the third week work.
You know, I'm just saying.
And I completely agree that people put things in there that shouldn't be there. That's not rocket science. That's been going on for centuries.
I do believe that. Price might increase for the city if we take it.
Probably, yeah. But I also know your cost has went up.
And our cost.
But not by your fault or, or the city's, it's just economics.
Right.
So earlier it was stated that the Opportunity Center is only accepting once a month?
Yes.
That's what they told us.
Yeah, so we would have to figure out storage.
No, so, so here's the thing though, if the city has a contract with Opportunity Center, then as, what does our contract state with them? Can we leverage them to accept it once a week or twice, twice a month or whatever? You know, we're asking to haul it out of the city, right? Just wherever it goes, it goes, for storage or the facility. But what does, what does our contract, Opportunity Center say?
I, I don't have it in front of me, but did, I mean, when Paul was taking it weekly, did they tell me you can only take it monthly?
I don't know. There's never been an issue, so I have no reason to look at that contract, but I certainly will.
So it sounds like Paul was storing it at our yard.
Yeah, but the relationship was different. This is our first shot at contracting out the service instead of hiring for the service.
Right. I understand the dynamics of it.
They, they take in the money, they, they do all of the billing. We collect, that's where I asked where the franchise fee came from. Where, where was it in our budget? And what they do is they, they pay us a fee, a fee for picking up, technically they give us money for having the contract, okay? Just like we, there's profit. It's the only place in, in our budget that we can make money is, is in our enterprise zones. So we got water, sewer, and we got garbage. It's the only place we're allowed to kind of skim off the top. It's probably not a great term, but that's why, to take money, to make money. Otherwise, it's just, it's tit for tat type of scenario business. We make extra money on, and that's, so instead of taking the risk of doing a contract with hauling Paul or having Paul do it, we were paying Paul X amount of dollars. Anytime there was a hiccup, we had to come up with extra money. This way, we put the bid out. This is done by the city of Waireca?
The city of Waireca is done by hundreds of cities.
City of Mount Shasta does it too, I believe.
Hundreds of cities throughout California have the same setup with a franchise agreement.
That's why we kind of went that direction.
And as Craig stated, we wanted to get out of the garbage business because quite honestly, there was no incentive with CND for them to perform. And that's where we were having all the issues, was the performance of it. And they were getting the same amount regardless of how many complaints we got. And that's one of the reasons why we decided to change the whole thing up and going into a franchise agreement.
Plus, we had to do all of the billing, so that took.
Yeah, we had to do all the billing.
All of the complaints, which was another, I probably, you've gotten a few of those, I'm sure. We're not getting anywhere, but I will tell you that I don't remember hearing, maybe I'm wrong, and I didn't hear them, but I didn't hear any complaints when the pickup service was once a week.
From, what, when CND was doing it?
Yeah, yeah. I, I didn't, I didn't handle those.
Yeah, yeah.
See, front office handled those.
Right.
That's kind of why we went this direction, to alleviate manpower hours up front.
But the distinction was that when it was once a week pickup, it was being stored on city property, and then it would go down to the Opportunity Center once a month. You're asking my clients to take on that exact same scenario, well, you're taking away their ability to store it. So now you're asking them to make four trips a month on the Opportunity Center, and again, the Opportunity Center lets them know they don't want it every week. So I think this can be worked out. I probably agree with you that.
Well, I, I don't know why you, you couldn't put it in a container on, on, I don't know what kind of facility you have, honestly. But if you have property, can you put one of those great big storage bins on that property and do that?
So I have those, and they rent for four hundred and fifty dollars a week, and I have all ten of them out right now. So that would be asking me to take that box out of commission for two weeks, and that would cost us nine hundred dollars in addition to the rest of our, what it's costing us to do the pickup, you know? I'm open to twice a month, that's fine. But the storage is an issue for us. I mean, we can put something at our facility, but, and we have boxes, but that's nine hundred dollars a month that we would be losing if we took that box out of commission.
Did CND just leave it in the pickup, Greg, down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they did. And then I, because I worked there a lot going back and forth. He, he would pick it up, it would sit in the, in the yard for a couple days, and then he, they'd run it down there, because like Henry was, that's what he did. It never stayed, it was gone before the weekend, or it was gone that Monday.
But I don't know, I mean, I don't know if the contract has changed since that time. Yeah, I don't really know, but I mean.
A smaller amount?
It sounds to me like we need to understand.
It was kind of new, it was kind of new then, and so everybody wasn't putting a lot out or picking up until it started to catch on, and then you had more.
So before we can make any kind of a form negotiable decision here, we need to understand the terms of the contract with the Opportunity Center and the frequency in which we can drop it off. Because otherwise, we're just shooting in the dark here between what we would like and what can be done.
I, I would recommend that you direct it back to staff, and we come back next month with a suitable agreement. And, and to answer your question, Mayor Palafini, the majority, I believe, between our, our legal counsel and their legal counsel had to deal with the performance bond. I don't think, did you guys talk a lot about the recyclables or?
Yeah.
Well, and I didn't, I was including the whole conversation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All of them were amendments to a contract or.
Yes.
Discussion of a contract.
Yes, yeah, and that, but I, I just wanted, and I, I think you had asked me, and I think we're probably up to eight or nine hours now of bill blowout.
It was, it's all been in the retainer.
Yep.
Hasn't been additional expense.
Yeah, we could have saved your retainer. Come, come give me that, you know.
Make a motion and we put it back to staff to investigate the terms of the contract with the Opportunity Center to present to the city council next month on our agenda what the contract terms are, what our options are for frequency, and what we can do to change said contract if, if we deem necessary to find a compromise between what the citizens expect for the service and what we can get from the Opportunity Center as our sorting facility, I guess.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
I'd, I'd be curious to know.
We just need a direction to staff to do that.
And I don't know if we can find out the answer. How many people, back when Paul did it, actually put their recycle out every week?
I didn't.
Did you do every week, Mark? Yeah, because I, I'm like every other week.
No, probably every second week or so, somewhere in there, so yeah, to be honest.
And sometimes it could be once a month.
Right. It just depends on.
I fill up my blue bag. When it's full, I put it out.
That's what I do too.
That's kind of what it was, so I would say once a week.
So we do need public comment, and there is a motion on the table. If the, if Councilman Parham doesn't feel like he needs to make the motion, he can rescind it given that it's a direction. But there is a motion, so you will need to take action on it.
Not hearing it, is there a second to the motion?
There was.
Second.
And, and what was the motion?
Public comment, any public comment?
It was, it was to send it back to staff to look at the options.
Oh, yeah, okay. It was to address staff.
I don't think you need, you need a motion so we can just direct staff.
You could, but there is a motion, so you have to respect the fact.
On the record and get it done.
Yeah.
All right.
Did that person?
There's a motion on the board, first and seconded, all in favor of sending it back to the staff for discussion, for direction.
Hi.
Okay. All opposed?
No.
No public comment?
I, there was no public comment.
They didn't say about recycle?
Work it out. Work that out.
We had plenty of public, we had three.
That's about how often.
So we will revise the amendment to reflect the performance bond that they approved, language, and get that to the parties for signature.
You want to just prepare that with?
Yeah, I'll just take out the section about the recycling and send it out.
I mean, my hours on bill as much as the attorneys, but they still go high.
Yeah, that banks the issue.
I'm getting there. Let's keep raising the insurance rate.
You can take anymore, anymore nowadays.
Can't be ridiculous anymore. All right, seeing no other business, we can go for staff reports? I, we. Chief Duncan? Chief Public Works?
I have nothing to report. I'm very not happy. If I get called a liar and be expected to negotiate with these people again, not happening.
Opposite Chief Mayberry, kind of y'all screwed up.
A couple things, we participated on August first in the national. Night out, we kept it kind of small. We were down at Bowls Creek Apartments, and there was an offer extended to the Mountain View Apartments across the street to come over and participate, but word of mouth or the flyers that were presented didn't get dispersed properly. So we can address that if there's a future event. But we had a small group of people from the Bowls Creek Apartments come out and watch K-9 demonstration and talked with the officers and answered any questions. The fifteenth, I was just told today, the fifteenth and sixteenth, there will be repaving on Highway ninety-seven from Alano to, I believe, just past California Avenue. So anticipate some traffic delays through the town. To address the vandalisms on Main Street, we do have a suspect in that. We submitted a case, but as I've stated in the past, you can't reduce crimes from serious offenses to minor offenses and have people get punished. That person's already on parole. They were recently sentenced a couple of years, a year ago, to four years in prison and did two weeks. So knocking over some stuff on Main Street's probably not going to get them sent back for that. They were just arrested several days prior to that on a felony warrant and were immediately released. So again, we do have a suspect, but unfortunately, in today's system.
Can we post a picture on the wall?
No, I don't, I don't like to.
I know.
Call people out like other agencies do, I just like to report what occurs.
I, I was, I would like to see if we could lock that place up again just for.
So to address that, the police department at one time was going down there and locking it, unlocking in the morning and unlocking at night. That was put, asked in a discussion with the Parks District, who takes care of that with their maintenance staff, they were going to handle any of that. So I would say if you want to start doing that again, maybe address that with Aldo.
Because I mean, the resource center can lock it in. Only thing we're concerned about is they bring the kids into the park, have a little bit of playtime, and then they roll them back out.
And I, I understand that. We've had some issues with some community members that want to keep, they want to be selective about who can go in the park and who cannot, and I cannot do that. It's open to everybody, so that, that's, again, we, I.
I can't use it for my own private park.
Well, no.
What the hell is wrong with this place?
They, they see somebody sitting in there they don't think should be in there, they want them removed. Or, and I, I tell them that's not the way it works. It's, if you're going to open the gates, it's going to be open to everybody, so.
It could be on the same circuit of if you want to use it, you need to call office at the parks and ask you.
Well, it, it is a nice thing to have there. I've seen families come through town, stop and have, but then, you know, when somebody doesn't think that a certain type of person sitting in there should be sitting in there with their, you know, backpack or their dog or their guitar or whatever, I, I can't go remove that person because you don't want to see that. You, you want a family, is what was said. One, one community member said to me, well, should, should be just be families. Well, that doesn't work that way, so.
The person has a family.
Somewhere.
The person with the dog and the guitar has.
No, I, they.
They just didn't bring them to the park.
Right, right.
Thanks, thanks for being gentle with me. Sandy, any comments?
No comments.
David? Any public comment?
Just wanted to let you know, in case you hadn't seen, that the Fair Political Practices Commission did adopt some regulations to implement. Law that makes campaign contributions over $250 the source of a conflict for council members. So previously, this rule really only applied. But because planning commissioners usually weren't running for office, it never came up. Now, campaign contributions can be the source of a conflict. From someone seeking an entitlement or certain contracts from the city, you would have to disclose that and recuse yourself. How you can return the money to avoid the conflict. So those regulations actually go into effect this weekend, and we are preparing a detailed memo to the council.
I'm just willing to find somebody to give me $200.
In the future. I just thought I would report on something.
How, how about the reverse scenario? If I go donate something to, to a nonprofit, is, can I not do that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, good, all right, thank goodness. Because that's the way it works in my house.
Is this going to take care of the, our representatives becoming millionaires? It seems as if we have an issue now. It, this, this sounds punitive to the, to the small community rather than to the, the people working with the lobbyists.
It, it really only applies to local.
That's pathetic.
Okay, you're on notice, no more than $200 apiece. I'll be collecting in the back.
$2.50, actually, so.
Well, I don't want to go to the rain, I, you know, keep it safe.
You do have to aggregate it over a 12-month period.
Okay. Tim, any?
I, I'm going to donate to you in aluminum cans, so. You can take them to the Opportunity Center. No, I'm just, it's a joke. Too soon, too soon, I'm sorry. Just trying to bring a little levity. Couple quick things, I just want to thank Craig and his team for getting out and busting their rear ends to get that lot cleared, for Tesla, as well as Chief Duncan, going out there and trimming the trees, and it was a team effort. And if you haven't seen the last couple of days, everything's gone. Everything is gone.
You know, I usually notice everything, and I just drove right by it tonight.
Yeah, it's just dirt, and that's what Tesla wanted, and that's what we provided, so.
Dirt.
Dirt, that's what the guy said, he goes, I need two feet of dirt, that's all we need.
And the building's gone too?
The building's gone.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a 40-year icon.
Did you, yeah, I, I, hey, I put my boots on yesterday, Craig thought I was joking, I showed up.
Farmers Insurance built that.
Did they?
Should thank us.
All right, well, I.
After a pollution spill.
Oh, yeah, okay, no. So anyway, and also real quickly, kind of got a, some, some really good news here, too. As we've all known, we've been working, I have been, since I got here with Banner Bank and trying to figure out a way to secure us a library, and it's been a, a bit of a challenge, but they have worked with us really good over the last, probably, I'd say, six months, and have agreed, so, and I'd like to personally thank the Weed Friends of the Library.
Thank you.
They made a generous donation of $120,000. I picked up the check yesterday, and, yeah, and, and so the city is on the hook for the, the balance of a whopping $150,000 for an 8,600-square-foot office building, which is pretty phenomenal. I think I added it up or divided it yesterday, it's about $17 a square foot. That's not bad for a, an 8,600-square-foot office.
You've been, you've been taking good lessons.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to help, I, I think a lot of it had to deal with the fact that they saw and a, a true need for this library to have a permanent home. And I explained to them multiple times, we, we were not eligible for any grants until we had like a significant lease, and they didn't want to do a significant long-term lease. And so I said, then sell us the building, how much do you want? And then we went back and forth, negotiated, and now we will be eligible for multiple grants. I've got a grant writer that I've talked to that's probably going to help us facilitate that, and hopefully we can pump a couple hundred thousand into fixing that up and utilizing some of the office space for possible nonprofits and different folks within the community. I, I'd love to see that kind of be the hub. Most libraries in most cities are kind of the hub of, of those type of things, so. Anyway, we're, we're excited about it. It should be closing probably early next week, and we'll get, and I know Katie with the library is ecstatic because she's always worried about getting the boot, and now she won't have to worry about that anymore, so. But anyway, good news for our community, good news for the city, and I think a great investment in our long-term needs for our library system.
I, I would, I would tell you that I was scanning through a bunch of emails yesterday, cleaning off my email list, and there was a report that you gave, 2022, City of Durant, happiness for the citizens of Durant. There was three, three things that were brought up tonight that made people really happy. Streets, number one. Number one, streets, they want, they like their streets. Number two, library was on that list, and the third one, we talked about what the hell was, oh, garbage removal.